I'd like to call to order this June 29, 2020, meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Tonight, we're going to continue with the hybrid-type meeting where we will have people joining us remote, and we also have people joining us in the audience tonight, which is very nice for a change. Good to see everybody. Brett, before I get you to explain to people how they can call in, I would like to identify members here on stage for the people that are not with us here physically tonight. To my far left is Mr. Larry Norvik. He's the District Two Supervisor. To his right is Mr. Mike Barley, District Three Supervisor. To my left is Mr. Brett Shardine, who is the interim County Administrator. To my right is Mr. Bill Cox. He is a District Four Supervisor. To his right is Mrs. Karen Kornack, District Five Supervisor, and at the end is Mr. Tom Lashney, our County Attorney. Brett, will you please explain to people that are joining us to remote how they might join us?
Yeah, so if you're one of the callers on the line, it looks like we have a few participating that way. If you wish to speak during either of our public comments, hit star nine, and that'll identify you. Awesome. We'll bring you online once your turn to speak. If you're watching the video and wish to speak, then you would hit the raise hand icon, and you can do that at the beginning. It'll cue everybody up that wishes to speak, and we'll bring you on one at a time.
Tonight, I'll leave us in a pledge of allegiance. Why would you do the invocation for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we come to you tonight again to do the people's business. Help us to remember that it is the people that is our boss collectively. Help us to be responsive to their needs, to be quick to listen, slow to speak. You also say in your book that money is a useful tool and can be of great benefit, but also money can be the root of all kinds of evil. You also teach us that people war against each other because they do not get what they want. Help us to avoid all these traps, Lord. Help us to have a reasonable discussion. There's a lot of money we're going to be talking about tonight. Just help us to be wise in the use of it and cordial to each other as we discuss our options. In your name, amen.
Do I have any request to postpone agenda items and additions, deletions, or changes in the oral presentation? If not, do I have a motion for formal approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
At this time, I have the honor and privilege of introducing our new County Administrator, Mr. Ned Smither. Come on down, Mrs. Smither. Mr. Smither brings over 16 years of local government experience, the last three of which were as the Director of Finance in Henrico County, Virginia. As Henrico's Director of Finance, Mr. Smither was responsible for the management and supervision of the divisions of Real Estate Assessment, Management and Budget, Accounting, Purchasing, and Risk Management. In his role as Director of Finance, he also managed the roles of the Commission of Revenue and the Treasury for Henrico County. Prior to his time in Henrico, Mr. Smither provided financial advisory banking services to many counties within the Commonwealth, assisting those counties with the development of comprehensive tenure, financial plans designed to provide the framework for future operating and capital improvement budget planning. Mr. Smither earned his undergraduate and his Master of Business Administration degree from the University of Richmond. Mr. Smither currently serves as the Director of the VML VACO Finance Board and is Chairman of the Lewiston Commerce Center Community Development Authority. Mr. Smither, welcome to the team in Palatine.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. It's an honor and a privilege to be chosen as your next County Administrator. We really, I know I see your vision, and that we want to make sure that the citizens in Henrico and understand, and the same as citizens of Palatine, understand that our goal here is to represent their money well and represent our actions well, and we want them to have as much pride in the work we do here in Palatine as they do in their own home and their own business. It's such an honor to be a part of that team today and your team to help you accomplish those goals. So thank you so much for the opportunity, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir. We look forward to working with you. At this time, I will open the first public comment period. Please give your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking for a group, we will allow you five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, can I let the audience know one thing, that we have, in fact, had a public hearing on the budget. So if you want to speak regarding the budget, now is your time. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Mrs. Kornack. That's an excellent point.
I'm from Rock Lake, I live on Hillwood Drive, Palatine. I just wanted to just bring up those three counties. I'm going to speak about Goochlin, Palatine, and Amelia. Of all the counties aside-wise, Palatine is the smallest, but we have the most population. And yet, in Goochlin, they pay 53 cents for $100 on real estate tax, and in Amelia, it's 48 cents. And ours is like, what, 82, something like that?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight? But that's a lot of money. And they all have fire departments, police departments. They got everything that we got. And I think that in order to encourage big businesses to come into here and share what they're doing in the Goochlin, they're building million-dollar homes or whatever they do over there, we could get that same stuff in here if we keep them personal property taxes down. That would encourage them bringing them in and keep it that way. We don't want to bring roof theft in here. We want to make it strong, but we can be competitive with these other counties if we would keep the real estate tax lower. Now, we're afraid of since hiring anybody else and the national raise. And here, I'm retired. My wife has cancer right now, and you live on a limited budget. That really bites into you. It doesn't taste good. And then a coronavirus, people aren't working. That doesn't taste good. So I would just like you to consider, but our neighbor counties are at least 30 cents less than what we're paying. And I think if we can bring it down, might encourage bigger businesses to come in like they do. I think we could use the loans out here. Other places, put out the fiddle so Cumberland can come in and spend the money here a little bit better. So that's all I got to say. Just keep that in consideration.
Thank you, sir.
First time this year, members of the board. Do we have a sign-up sheet?
No, I think we did away with the sign-up sheet for right now.
Because of COVID.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
My name, Don Silverbeller, 1426 Donovan Lane, Palatine, Virginia.
Welcome.
Thank you, members of the board. Let me first say that we are talking about people's money, not schools' money, not the county's money. For the past four years, we've all spoken about Palatine's tax rate being too high. In fact, it has been in the top dozen highest in the state. This would be the right time to begin fixing this inequity. Now, I'm going to just touch on Plan A and Plan B of the combined budget. I mean, if that's appropriate, I'm not talking about school budget. I'm talking about the big budget. I've seen a Plan A and a Plan B, or Budget A and Budget B. So that's what I'm going to be referring to. Both plans being presented do reduce the tax rate. However, we have just come through a reassessment, which raised real estate taxes on average by 16% per our County Commissioner of Revenue. So unless the rate is substantial, the tax rate is substantially reduced, lower than 88 cents, we will pay significantly more in real estate taxes. Budget A with an 85-cent tax rate will effectively increase taxes by some 10% and places an unreasonable burden on taxpayers and will have the worst effect on those most vulnerable in meeting their financial responsibilities, those who are at the lower end of the economic scale and those who have lost their employment. So I would be in favor of, these are the only top two options that we have, I'm in favor of Budget B, as it represents only a slight tax increase of about 3%, and will, at least on paper, reduce our real estate tax rate. Whichever budget is adopted, it can always be adjusted. So I'm in favor of being more aggressive upfront and adjusting as we move through the year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Jim Carver. I live at 4245 Stagger Creek Drive, Palatine, Virginia, and I'm in District Five.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to try not to repeat anything I've heard, so I've chopped out some of my comments. And I'm going to be, I'm speaking for multiple people, so I might indulge the board for the five minutes. If I go over five, I'll email my comments. Thanks. Championship teams, I always reflect and apply lessons learned. That said, you know, I would, I just would ask, you know, in the subject area, I've got five subject areas to talk about. In the subject area of transparency and process and timeline, I would just ask us to reflect and wonder if we could have done better. I understand we've had a lot of constraints with COVID and virtual meetings, et cetera, but there's been many meetings. To have received, you know, a tax increase, a reduction in the rate, but a taxing net increase of 5 cents and receive that late Wednesday night, and then gone through a few iterations, adding, I think, an option B into the budget process, seemed a little bit of a surprise for myself, having attended most of the meetings. I think you've had seven or eight meetings and workshops. I don't remember much discussion about rates, et cetera, but there's, so anyhow, those are my thoughts. Second subject area, tax rate collection rate, again, not repeating what somebody else might have shared. Remember that it's the real estate tax. It's not paid by all of the citizens in Palatine. It's paid by the folks that pay real estate tax only, which, of course, provides a large revenue stream. As I understand it from listening to many of your workshops and meetings, apparently the significant driver of this tax increase to 85 is the belief that we're going to have a low collection rate, lower than the year previous, which is 97.8, if my memory is correct. This forecast is based on economic impacts of the COVID crisis on our taxpayers. I understand we're concerned, taxpayers are affected, et cetera. So the assumption is we're going to have a low collection rate. Well, if there's a belief that our taxpayers have been so significantly impacted by the COVID crisis financially that we would anticipate a 5.8 reduction in collection rate from 97.8 to 92, then why, it seems ironic that we would raise the taxes on those people that we believe are so significantly affected financially. So is that the viable solution, or should we look elsewhere? Essentially, what you're doing is putting the dollar burden on the smaller group of taxpayers. Folks that pay the real estate tax are a subset of the 29,000 citizens. Then a further subset is the folks that pay the real estate taxes. Last year, 97.8% collection rate, the worst being 94%, I believe, in 2008 with the recession. Then apparently, if we believe a forecast of 92%, that's a smaller subset. So essentially, putting the burden on the smaller subset that we've relied on in the past. So assuming that the board has proposal rate and a revenue amount that will satisfy the budget needs, in other words, you set at 85 cent, and you have a revenue number that you're going to meet if you hit your collection rate of 92%, my question would be, will the board commit, if you collect higher than 92%, will the board commit to return those funds to the citizens that we pay too much? If, in my opinion, if the county collects or over collects because you forecast a low collection rate and you've over collected, I would not categorize that as a positive windfall. I would categorize it as an erroneous collective, collection of excess taxes from the citizens. But I don't think you have the budgetary mandate, nor do I see it in a line item, to spend excess dollars collected from the taxpayers. My third bullet area, school board, I'm doing good on time. So school board retention of $980,000. I know this has undergone a lot of discussion, and I'll be brief. We should have in place a culture where efforts to execute funds are rewarded. I call that incentivizing frugality. The agreement that the Board of Supervisors has with the school board, I believe, should be met and complied with. This will help to ensure that all organizations don't develop burn-down plans and burn all their cash so that there don't have excess left and jeopardize losing it back to the allocating authority, the Board of Supervisors. Fourth point, quarterly budget approach. I think this is a great approach. I've heard a lot of discussion about quarterly budget approaches, and I'm sure you've already considered this. You know, this will allow you to set monthly and quarterly benchmarks and metrics that you can establish to track your expenditure rates, collection rates, et cetera, and monitor and adjust as needed. I think that's a great idea. My final point is on the subject area of direct cuts versus savings, direct cuts by savings via efficiencies, or what I call seeing the forest through the trees. I'm often asked, hey, Jim, thanks for complaining, but what would you cut? And I'm being a little flippant. That's not, it's always great dialogue when I talk with each of you. But I think that's, that's some, that's a great question, but sometimes skewed, you know? Because I don't approach, and I don't recommend approaching budgets line item by line item by line item. I'm asking you to see the forest through the trees. We seem to get hung up on, and it's a lot of money, 900K here, 54K here, 82K here, et cetera, when I really would like us to focus less on line-by-line cuts. And instead, why don't we focus on why we need to have a renewed effort to manage funds by performing And instead, why don't we focus on why we need to have on, on a renewed effort to manage funds by performance, you know, performance-based budgeting, have metrics in place, delivering capability. So we should be tracking our dollar.
Mr. Carver, you're well over your five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Brooke Spraberry Smith, thirty-five, forty-eight Richards Run.
Welcome.
Good evening to you guys. Um, I, um, should recuse myself and say I'm gonna speak on a little different point than these guys have. I work for the school system and have served this county for twenty-seven years. And, um, as I was thinking about my comments tonight, I kept coming back, and I don't know if this story will make much sense, but seventeen years ago, I stood in my front yard of my house in Cumberland County on a January morning when it was burning down. And, um, when the fire chief got there, he looked at me and said, I know you're not gonna understand what I'm gonna do, but there's four hundred acres of trees around you and we gotta wet these trees before we put your house fire out because we can't let the trees burn down and the forest burn down while your house is burning down. We got two fires going on. And I understood. And ultimately, before the day was over, there were two tanker trucks there. Never did they take water out of one tanker truck and put it in another tanker truck and say, we're gonna hold this for the fire that might happen six months down the line. And I use that analogy with you guys and ladies because I think at this point, we got a couple fires going on. We've got a fire of COVID going on in this county and we have a fire of absolute turnover of employment on both fronts. I appreciate what Jamie had to say a few weeks ago about the employment level at the county, and it's the same at the school. And what you need to know is that for a lot of the rhetoric that's out there on social media, the reality is that as a teacher in the school division, since two thousand and eight, my pay, take-home pay has not changed at all. I found a pay stub the, this weekend, unfortunately, I'm a paper hoarder, and I found a pay stub that showed my take-home pay on March of two thousand and nine was two thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. I looked up the pay that will drop into my account tomorrow morning, is two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars in twelve years. Our insurance has gone up sixty-three percent. Our VRS payment we have taken on in full, and the turnover in our school division and in our county is unbelievable. We are not building a strong, solid system. I know I'm not, I can't talk to you guys about raises, I can't talk to you about any of those things, but a few years ago, a few of you sat and talked about one-team approach. And that is something I would really like to challenge you all to get back to talking about. That what we do for county employees is what we do for school employees. And when we are talking about insurance rate adjustments, it's across the board and we are talking about pay raises. The nonsense of regional median averages for pay for different members of our staff has do- has not served your longest and most faithful-serving employees in this county. And that is why turnover at the high school right now, our average tenure is under five years. That has to get fixed. And I would challenge you all to take the courageous leadership that it is going to require to, one, fund the school to the level that we keep and retain employees. Because yes, we can hire new teachers, but we want long-serving teachers who are gonna serve our children well. That is what I would ask for you tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Andrew Clinton Sneed, and I reside at two-nine-one-four Edith Lane in District Three.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm an educator because I believe strongly in the power of teaching and learning and the world-shaping impact of these two forces in the context of a supportive environment. Cultivating young minds and helping students find their passion, purpose, and place in the world is the apex of the human experience. And I am humbled every day that I get to be a small part of their journey. I chose to work in Palatine because I believe that all students should have access to a world-class public education regardless of their zip code. Growing up here in Palatine, I had teachers who poured into my life, and I chose to return to Palatine to do the same for a new generation of young minds. I, along with all of my Palatine County Public School colleagues, express devotion in the midst of despair, hope, and hard times in an unwavering will in the wilderness that is our world and turmoil. At this moment, our students will need the social, emotional, academic, artistic, and athletic endeavors that model community more than ever before. Though I have the privilege of leading a world-class performing arts program, I'll use a scientific analogy for the impact of any potential cut. You've all seen the rings of trees and the story that they tell. No matter how much good happens after a particularly difficult season, the tree always bears the mark of what happened, and it cannot recover that growth. Tonight, you have the opportunity to prevent stunted growth for our students by fully funding our schools. I understand that there are many difficult decisions to be made and that the dollars that you have to make decisions with are limited. And I appreciate the thoughtful conversation that I've observed from afar on Zoom over the last several weeks. And I would encourage you, as you make difficult decisions, to remember that every day, I, along with all of my colleagues, go to work knowing that we may have to lay down our lives for each of those beautiful young faces. And we do it joyfully because we know the impact that we might have. And if you have to make a difficult decision tonight in the, in the favor of good, you will be in great company with Abraham Lincoln and Winston Churchill, with Joan of Arc, Martin Luther King Jr., Nelson Mandela, and Jesus Christ. So I ask you tonight, as you deliberate, to do all that you can to do all that is right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to come forward and address the board of public comment tonight?
Say my name again?
No, sir, you cannot speak again at this public, on this one. No, sir, you can't, you only get one shot at it.
Jamie Timberlake, fourteen fifty Schroeder Road. Just disappointed that both plans, uh, after we had lots of meetings, as everybody talked about on Zoom and I spoke last week about, um, I, I'm just, I've been here a long time and I'm just tired of seeing every time we get to balancing a budget, it ends up being on the backs of the employees. We've got money to go recruit some of the best in the region to come out and take over as county administrator, but I can't keep people working for me or the schools that, um, deserve a decent, small amount of pay. And we're not talking about raises anymore, we're talking about covering their health care. We're talking about fifty-some odd thousand dollars. That's scary, that we can't figure out how to pay health care increases. When the second part of that is, a month and a half ago, they had to choose which plan they want, and now they're locked into and can't get out of. So remember that a, a month and a half ago, when we had all these public hearings and, and the insinuation and everything that we were hearing as employees was that we weren't gonna be able to do raises, but we were gonna handle the health care increase. So they all made their decisions and chose their plans for the year on that knowledge. And now we come tonight and tell them that it could be as much as a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety dollars a month out of some of your lowest-paid employees' health care. I don't know, guys, I can't figure it out. I don't have the answer, but if fifty-eight thousand dollars makes a difference in this county's budget, we're in a bad spot, way worse than I see as a revenue collector, revenue assessor, so.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to come forward tonight?
We do have, uh, four online.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Sharpe, great.
Uh, so we'll just start at the top, uh, Mary Sheehy.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Mary Sheehy.
Welcome, we're having trouble hearing you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
I live at twenty-two, seventeen Lakeview Road Drive in Powhatan. And I'm just here to say that I support Budget Plan A. I'm not a parent of school-aged children, but I do volunteer in, uh, at Flat Rock. And I support paying whatever taxes I need to pay to fully fund the school, school's requested budget. Uh, I believe in a good education. I believe that great schools attract business and people interested in moving to Powhatan. And I don't support defunding the sheriff's office, but I do support fully funding the public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mike Asif.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone, thank you. Board of Supervisors, Mike Asif, three-six-seven-three.
Welcome.
Buckingham Road, Powhatan, Virginia, did you hear all that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, cuz I, I, I just wanted to double-check. Well, I appreciate the board of supervisors, uh, providing the public with these, uh, two plans for, that will reduce the tax rate for Powhatan citizens, but also responsibly, uh, support essential services such as our schools. Uh, I, I support Plan A. Uh, I feel that it provides the highest level of support for our schools. And we need support for our schools because we don't know right now that there will likely be increased, some increased costs in certain areas for reopening schools. Just the description we heard, one of the workshops was that it might take seven bus runs to do what two bus runs used to do in the past. That, uh, having half of our students in the buildings may be more costly as we rotate students through schools. So we don't know. We have a tax, uh, tax rate cut to eighty-five and Plan, eighty-five cents in Plan, uh, A, which I believe is responsible. The median, the home price, uh, in Powhatan is quoted, we received from two thousand and nineteen at two-hundred-and-three-thousand-nine-hundred dollars. Uh, the, the rate cut will, uh, cut, uh, to eighty-five cents, will cut that bill by eighty dollars. Uh, if it goes to eighty cents, it'll cut a bill to a hundred and sixty-three, by a hundred and sixty-three dollars per year. Fifty cents a day. Uh, and I know that, uh, I appreciate the burdens of our taxpayers, but I think our schools, the quality of our schools is worth it. And a ninety percent collecting rate is pretty conservative planning for the future. I do believe, however, that the board should take a look at allowing the school to benefit from the efficiencies by allowing it for, uh, to hold that revenue, uh, that they have not spent in a reserve fund for a cost that may be incurred in the following school year, uh, in the future. So I believe that, um, the, the board of supervisors also built in, uh, quarterly appropriations, so the, the board of supervisors still has control over where the appropriations go in the future. So I just wanna commend the board for providing us with these options and, uh, look forward to, hoping you will support, uh, fuller funding of our schools in Plan A. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Andrea Berger.
Welcome. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
We can, sir.
Okay, uh, I'm Dan Gilde, I'm Andrea's husband. I live at twenty-eight-seventy Maple Grove Lane West. What I wanna say is, earlier, a gentleman talked about the opportunity to lower taxes to attract business. And it is very important that we work to attract resources that will help to build the, the community. However, attracting business is a chance to attract something you might get. Whereas a resource that we have right now is, are the students in school. It's fair to say that we will have a lower collection rate low, uh, locally. We'll probably also have a lower tax collection rate by state and federal level, but we should not take that out on the students that are going to be in class. That is the resource we have to ensure a brighter future in Powhatan. And the investment we make towards that resource is the best resource, is the best investment we can make. The people who will be paying for that will be the landowners and homeowners, not the renters. And if the people who have equity in Powhatan aren't willing to put forth a little extra money, and I realize that these times are hard, but because these times are hard, it's more important now that the people who have equity in land and in housing here invest in the future of Powhatan. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Beth Jones.
Welcome. Welcome. Welcome.
I don't know if it's muted on their end, we can't hear you. We do have one more speaker and then I have three, uh, written comments that were submitted that I could read. So we could go through those and maybe, uh, Ms. Jones will be able to get on. Uh, so the next one would be Rebecca Courtwright.
Welcome.
Hi, everybody, um, I just, I've been looking at all these things and commenting and something that-
Please give your address.
Oh, sorry, Rebecca Courtwright, thirty thirty-three Millmount Lane.
Thank you.
The majority of our budget comes from people that pay real estate taxes. And I would argue that the reason that our assessments have gone up is because people are moving to this county because the schools are good. If you get rid of that and our assessments go down, then what do you do? So I am in favor of fully funding the schools or Plan A. I know it cuts a little bit, but we have to, like the speaker before me said, that is an investment in our future and it's investment in our county. It's not just about how much money people get paid, it's the overall idea of what Powhatan is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, do you wanna try Ms. Jones again and then I'll read these comments?
Welcome. Can you hear us, Ms. Jones? Tell the comments and we'll give, then we'll come back to Ms. Jones again.
Okay, we have, uh, three sets of comments emailed from folks, I'll read them. Uh, the first is from Miranda Gresham, three-one-seven-zero Elwood Farm Lane, District Five. Uh, she says, I'm a teacher in another division that resides in Powhatan. I would like to suggest that the board consider a few things as they make decisions this evening. I would like to see the county maintain a revenue-neutral tax rate for the county. Seeing as raising taxes would both deter people and businesses from coming out there, out here, and would disproportionately affect many of our poorer citizens. None of us can really take more of a hit right now, but especially people who've lost businesses and jobs because of the government lockdown and corresponding regulations. So far as spending goes, obviously there will need to be cuts. However, I feel there need to be very well thought out and deliberate so as to protect the essentials like fire and EMS, the schools, and the sheriff's department. There's fat to be cut in any given situation that doesn't compromise the essentials as listed above. Lastly, please allow, if possible, the schools to retain the savings from not having students in the building for several months and provide needed support for the schools as you can. Dr. Johnson and his staff are outstanding people. I know this because I served Powhatan schools for several years towards the start of my time as an educator. I know they would, um, I know they have worked diligently to find cuts they can realistically make without cutting workers or compromising the quality of education they offer our community's children. The schools are trying to do this all while our governor has handled down a series of unfunded mandates that they have to account for somehow as well. While there are certain things we as teachers can do to ease the burden and that other community members would willingly do to help as well, we can't do it with all without needed funding for things like extra cleaning supplies, thermometers, et cetera. These requirements place a huge burden on schools throughout the Commonwealth and the division will need your help to make things work. As an educator, I know what it means to be asked to do more with less, and we often do a lot here already, like providing kids in need with school supplies, keeping snacks on hand for kids who need them, helping kids get jackets, hats, and gloves when needed, et cetera. But at some point, you can't get blood out of a turnip. I know times are crazy hard, but please empower our schools to do their job and do it well. Our children's future depends on it. Thanks in advance for your consideration of these important matters as you make crucial decisions about our county's future. And then the second is from, um, Debbie Weir. So she says, dear members of the board of supervisors, my name is Debbie Weir and I live at one-five-zero-one Page Road, Powhatan, Virginia. I know that this budget and tax cycle has been a very difficult one this year. However, I believe all of you ran on not raising taxes in your platforms last year. Also, in the meetings, there has been little public discussion by the board of where we are headed this cycle for the budget and the tax rate. The proposed eighty-five cents a hundred is a very substantial increase and will burden on the taxpayers of Powhatan County, especially for those who have been impacted with job losses. I beg you to reconsider setting the tax rate at eighty-five cents, but to lower it closer to the eighty, uh, eighty-cent revenue-neutral. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. And then we have one last comment that was submitted. Uh, this is by Angela Deveraux, District One, two-one-one-five Chestnut Estates Drive. And she says, my family spent twenty years in Chesterfield County before purchasing an existing home here in Powhatan in the summer of two thousand and nineteen. Excuse me. We spent a great deal of time researching the school system and opportu- "We spent a great deal of time researching the school system and opportunities for students, including gifted services, before deciding to make the move prior to one child starting middle school and the other starting high school. I was so pleased with what I found from my research that we made the move. Education and opportunities equal to or surpassing what Chesterfield County offered was a major deciding factor in our move. It would be so disheartening to find out that only one year after uprooting our children, we've made the wrong choice for their education due to excessive budget cuts. When people ask how we like the schools here, I'd like to be able to continue to boast about all that we have to offer students, not to have to tell them that we might be, they might be taken away." Those are all of our written comments. We can try Ms. Jones one more time. Again, maybe muted on your end. Possibly, we're not hearing you.
Welcome, Ms. Jones. Looks like it's not going to happen tonight.
We do have an additional speaker, Selena Shiosha.
Welcome.
She muted on our end, John.
Hi, can you hear me?
Welcome.
Hi. I would just like to express my support for a fully funded school budget. Not only does my household support...
Can you please give us your name and your address?
Sure. It's Selena Shiosha. I'm at 1852 Oakland Estates Drive.
Welcome.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to review all the options. I'd like to let you know that not only does my household support the fully funded school budget, but my parents and my in-laws also both live in Powhatan County. So, you know, for what that's worth, take it as three little tallies in your hats as three households that pay taxes, that want all of their grandkids to have a great school experience. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is that it? Okay. Not seeing anybody else come forward for the first public hearing. Nope. I do see somebody coming forward.
710 Maidens Road.
Welcome.
Good to see you all again. I'm not a stranger to standing before this board. I am for Plan A. I'm also, in supporting the schools, I'm also for making sure that Powhatan has an identity. Currently, we have an identity crisis. We don't know who we want to be. We say we want really great schools, but then we don't want to fund them. We say we want fire and rescue, but then we want to cut them too. We say we want great sheriff's department, but then all of a sudden, you know, we look at their budget offset. We, I talked to Sheriff Nellie the other day, and it costs $100,000 to get the body cams as we're looking at stuff. We want the very best for our community, but we've got to find some way how to make it. That's your job. We elected you to, and we're going to work with you to make sure that that happens. But right now, we don't know where we're going. I hope that we can work together to make sure that we find our identity, to make sure that we can bring great businesses to Powhatan, to make sure that we can have the very best school system, to make sure that we can have outstanding public works, and outstanding fire and rescue, and outstanding police. We've got to make sure that that happens because the future depends on it, and everything costs someone something. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to come forward? If not, I will close the first public hearing. That will take us to the resolution requesting flexibility in school reopening that we wish to send as a resolution from the school board and the board supervisors. Mr. Shawdon?
Yep. So, this resolution would be requesting on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the school board jointly that the governor allow some flexibility to school systems like ours and the reopening guidelines. Powhatan County, we've been fortunate compared to many of the others in the region and even compared to other smaller rural localities across the state with a significantly lower total rate of infection of COVID-19, but also our per capita rate has been quite low compared to some of those neighbors. So, the governor's shown that he'll do some things on a different regional basis with Northern Virginia delaying their Phase 1, City of Richmond as well. So, this would just state that we think it should both work, should work both ways, and we should be entitled to some additional flexibility.
What's the pleasure of the board? Would you like to have this resolution read tonight?
Mr. Chairman, it has to be ratified by both boards. Has it been ratified by both boards?
No, but I won't, I won't address the issue of having it read tonight, and then we can vote on our end as to whether or not we want to support it.
Yes, sir. I'd very much like to have it read.
Mr. Shawdon, would you read the resolution?
Yes. Resolution to grant Powhatan County School Board flexibility related to reopening schools in the fall of 2020. Whereas COVID-19 has impacted our state, nation, and world like no other pandemic in recent memory, and whereas in order to ensure the health and safety of all Virginians, schools across the Commonwealth closed on March 13th, 2020 for the remainder of the school year. And whereas individual school divisions retain the autonomy to decide whether or not new instruction would continue and the format in which the instruction would be presented. And whereas student access to the Internet was and continues to be inadequate in many rural localities, including Powhatan County. And whereas many student distance learning experience was negatively impacted by additional factors, including but not limited to access to adult assistance, working status of parents, and economic stress. And whereas research is clear that the amount of learning loss since March 13th will be more significant than students experience during a typical summer break, especially for our at-risk students. And whereas these conditions will undoubtedly exacerbate existing learning gaps, and whereas the social and emotional health of our students will continue to be harmed the longer they do not have access to school supports and adult interaction. And whereas working families are disproportionately impacted by students not being in school full-time during the school year. And whereas regrettably, Virginia has had over 51,251 confirmed cases of COVID-19 that resulted in over 6,827 hospitalizations and over 1,477 deaths, whereas Powhatan County COVID-19 numbers have been and currently remain significantly lower than many peer localities. Whereas the governor has demonstrated his willingness to consider making regional decisions by delaying some locality's entrance into Phase 1 and Phase 2. And whereas the number of new positive cases of COVID-19 continues to decline across Virginia, while there is an even smaller percentage of new positive cases in Powhatan. And whereas we are dedicated to providing a safe, healthy, and effective learning environment for our students, teachers, staff, and communities based on our local health metrics and in consultation with our local health department directors. Now, therefore, be it jointly resolved that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors and the Powhatan County School Board do hereby request that Governor Ralph Northam grant local school boards the authority to reopen schools in a manner that is practical, safe, healthy, and effective in consultation with their local health department.
I'm going to move that we adopt the resolution R2020-42. Well, I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Please.
The "now, therefore," at the end talks about a practical, safe, healthy, and effective in consultation with their local health department. If I'm not mistaken, in a declared emergency, the Virginia Health Department basically is calling a lot of the shots, and legally so. My question is, do we know if the local health department has the authority and ability to change what the Virginia Department of Health hands down?
I doubt that they do. What we could do is amend the resolution to say, "In consultation with the Virginia Department of Health and the local health department," working with the local health department, something like that, to bring them into the, you know, into the discussion.
I can support that.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
This is asking the governor to allow us to work with our own local health department, superseding the way in which he's operating today. So, we're asking for a complete change and not working with the state health department, but a local health department in Chesterfield County. And the governor can do that.
I know the governor has publicly said, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Please, Mr. Norvik.
Thank you. I know the governor has said he does not mind flexibility on this issue. If we are asking to be completely detached from the Virginia Department of Health, I'm not sure I'm in favor of that. I am in favor of as much local government and as much local regulations as possible, but I think it's a both and. If the Virginia Department of Health won't allow local flexibility, then I think we're dead in the water anyway. But I'm assuming from the governor's comments that he would allow that flexibility. I don't, you know, I'm not trying to strain it in that here, but I don't want to be passing a resolution that has absolutely no teeth in it. We can't just go off and do what we want without the state saying that, yes, we agree. Your local health department is allowed to do thus and so.
Mr. Cox?
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have no problems with what Mr. Norvik is suggesting.
Okay, so, we have an amended resolution. Matt, can you read back the last sentence that incorporates the change?
Mr. Norvik, can you repeat the change?
And I can do it for you. "In effective and in consultation with the Virginia Department of Health, working with the local health department." Ms. Norvik, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cox?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Carmack? Okay. I will go back and withdraw my original motion and put forward the new motion with the changes. Again, I'm going to ask that we approve Resolution R-2020-42 with the changes that have been put forward, that we, that in effective consultation with the Virginia Department of Health and the local health department at the end. Okay? I'm going to make that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amended resolution? Mr. Shawdon, would you call the roll?
Mr. Norvik?
Hi.
Mr. Barley?
Hi.
Mr. Cox?
Hi.
Mrs. Carmack?
Hi.
Mr. Williams?
Hi. Resolution passes. That will bring us to old business, where we have a series of items addressing the budget. The first is the resolution for adopting the FY21 budget. Mr. Shawdon, would you please lead us into that discussion?
Yep. So, in your packet, we have two resolutions presented with the accompanying resolutions for the school transfers, tax rate, first quarter appropriation, et cetera. So, Resolution A would be a set an eighty-five cent tax rate at a ninety-two percent collection rate with a reduction of the school's transfer of $188,000. Then you have a version B, which would set the tax rate at eighty-two cents, assume a ninety-four percent collection rate with a reduction in the school transfer of $653,709. And then we have, it's not in your packet, but you do have it before you, a Resolution C, that would set a tax rate of eighty cents, ninety-four percent collection rate with a reduction in the school transfer of $571,188. I believe there's a presentation on one of these resolutions, and then Charlotte and I are available to answer questions.
What we will do is we will go through each one. We have A through now C proposals. We will discuss the proposals and the order in which they were received by staff, and then we will go back, and then we will vote again on the different proposals and the order that they were received. So, we will now begin the discussion on version A.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cox?
Could I have my presentation, please? As I start this, I'm going to start not delving into the budget right away, but really with the subject of revenue neutral, since there seems to be a fair amount of confusion on what that is and what that is not. Could we go to the next slide? And could we put it in a slideshow? Thank you. Next slide. The question is, what is revenue neutral? We've already heard it several times tonight, and revenue neutral, quite frankly, is a number of things. It starts out with a statutory calculation required by the Code of Virginia, which sets up the parameters, and attempts to take a look at the changing tax base and how much money is coming from the electorate. And when it goes through the calculation, which is, like I say, Code of Virginia, it ignores use tax implications, it ignores new construction, and it assumes that you're going to get one hundred percent of everything you built. So, when all of this happens, it spits out a number, and the number it spit out this year is eighty cents. So, everybody takes eighty cents and runs with it. So, let's kind of look at what that looks like at the county level. Could we have the next slide? All right. Above the horizontal line, you have a series of tax rates, eighty cents, eighty-two, eighty-four, eighty-six, and eighty-eight. And going down the left side, you have collection rates, ninety-seven point eight, ninety-four, ninety-two, ninety, and eighty-eight. And at the top, you have FY20 budgeted real estate revenues, and now we're talking about real estate revenue money, not percentages, not changes, but money. So, and for the budget, which is just ending this year, be ending this week, we projected that we would have $29,840,300 in real estate revenue. So, now let's go over to the magic eighty cents line. And there you see a number of thirty-one thou, thirty-one million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand. Please go back. Thank you. Seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That's the amount of money that we would get this year at eighty cents with a hundred percent collection. You will notice that that is more than we got last year, and the reason for that is last year we didn't get a hundred percent, and it doesn't include new construction. So, you have eighty cents, line column coming down. We go down, we don't get a hundred percent. We normally get ninety-seven point eight, and that has thirty-one million, eighty-six thousand. Now, if you look at the thirty-one million, eighty-six thousand, go back up above the solid line, you'll notice that you just lost $700,000, two pennies, gone, evaporated, never there. Eighty becomes eighty-two. Now, if you come down the collection rate and you go to ninety-two percent, and you go across to where you get a black number, it's under eighty-six cents, you have thirty-one thou, thirty-one million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, which is roughly equivalent to what you get from eighty cents at ninety-seven point eight. So, the point of all of this is revenue neutral is a number. It's a dollar number. It's not a tax rate, and it is a function of both your collection rate and your tax rate, and it can be a number of things. Could I have the next slide, please? We're talking about tonight a tax rate of eighty-five cents with a ninety-two, ninety-two percent collection rate that produces thirty-one million, seventy-six thousand. That is almost identical to eighty cents at ninety-seven point eight. In this world of math, eighty-five and ninety-two is revenue neutral because that's the same amount of money the county takes in at ninety-seven point eight and eighty. Does this mean that no one will get a tax increase? Absolutely not. So, this is how it looks on the county side. This is the money we have to spend. Let's go look at it as an individual taxpayer. Next slide, please. Here's a house that was valued at $218,000 in 2018, a tax bill at eighty-eight cents was $1,920. In 2020, the valuation went up, so will the tax bill. In order to get this taxpayer to pay the same amount of money they paid in 2018, tax rate has to be seventy-two cents. So, you're, whether you're going to be paying the same amount of money or not really depends on your situation. Why did I choose this example? This is the Cox household. So, no matter what anybody tells me tonight about tax rates and the fact that my taxes are not going up, in the Cox household, taxes are going up. Next slide. Now, I'd like to get into the budget, and this is the version A budget. We had kind of a unique and interesting exercise because we're planning without revenue and cost data. We don't have it. We say, what do you mean you don't have cost data? Our largest partner, the schools, fifty-eight percent of our budget, does not know what they're going to spend. They don't know whether it's going up. They don't know whether it's going up or down. And we're planning for a reduction in revenues. This is what has made it so difficult. Could we go to the next slide? So we have a different kind of budget cycle for you. We have a July to December 2020. It's a six-month cycle. We're trying to get to a point where we actually have some real information on which to make some decisions. So in the first quarter, July through September, the schools will be doing continuing planning. They'll start some transportation modifications, particularly in buses and routes and that sort of thing, and real costs will actually start. County, we will have no new revenue information for the 2021 budget in the first quarter. We expect 2020 to close out with no significant surprises. Second quarter, October through December, schools, actual cost data will start in. We'll be able to get some projections for the balance of the year. And the county November collections will equal a revenue picture. And so we'll revisit this budget in December. What can we do? We can do virtually anything you can get three votes for. You can restore some cuts such as higher increases, you could tap the Revenue Stabilization Fund, we'll talk about that in a minute, or you could finalize the school budget, or you could advertise a different tax rate for June. So what we're trying to create is a plan to get us to a point where we have some definitive information on which we can make some real decisions. Next slide. Some numbers for you. The average increase in values is not 16%. It's nine and a half to 10%. Mr. Timberlake will be telling us, I believe, in late July what the actual numbers are. The collection rate, this is, this is, as Mr. Carver said earlier, this is a big, important thing. Our normal is 97.8. In the last recession, it dropped almost four points to 94%. We are projecting that it'll drop another two points. So why two points? First of all, if we were to take it to 90, we would begin to have to look at fellow days and change in staff. We don't need to go there yet. So, but why 92? Why not 94? Well, the answer is simple. There is no good news. The economy has been absolutely body slammed by COVID. The feds, Central Bank, Central Bank projected high employment for several years, a long slog back from the pandemic-induced recession. Expect unemployment rate then 2020 at 9.3% remain elevated for some time. A grim picture of the path ahead, with millions remaining out of work for the next several quarters, and gross domestic product embarking on a slow climb from its top. The share of U.S. homeowners who fell behind in their mortgage payments rose in March to the highest level, highest share in seven years. Almost 5 million Americans have taken loan payment forbearance because of the pandemic. When you take loan forbearance, you get to push your principal interest forward, but you still have to pay the stuff that's in escrow, your insurance and your tax bill. Almost 5 million people have taken loan forbearance because of the pandemic. Those loans are not counted as delinquent. The economists, data which suggests that if Americans chose to avoid person-to-person proximity of the length of an arm or less, not six feet, the length of an arm or less, occupations worth approximately 10% of the national output would become inviable. And you can just go on day after day after day. And then we have social strife, shutting down our cities, tearing them apart. COVID is resurging, and states are beginning to shut themselves down. So there is no new good information. The real question is, why aren't we setting it at 90? And I told you, if we set it at 90, we're going to have to start to do some things we don't want to do. And we will talk about a revenue stabilization plan, but we have a Plan B that will allow us to deal with problems if we have problems at 92%, only because we have Plan B. The budget has a tax rate of 85 cents, a collection rate of 92%. This is a decrease in revenue. We're not talking about an increase in revenue, a decrease in revenue of $750,000. The county budgets reduced 1.7%, and schools reduced 0.8%. Now, Revenue Stabilization Fund. I want to talk about this. It's approximately $2 million, which we're establishing, funded by savings, not revenue from this year, but savings from 2020 from the school and county budgets. As soon as this topic came up, discussions, discussion started, I started hearing people assigning ownership to tax revenues, their money, our money, the school's money. Folks, there's only taxpayer money. I'm sorry, there's only taxpayer money, which is to fund the needs of the entire county, and the Board of Supervisors is responsible for making the distribution of that to make sure we have excellent public service. Next slide, please. So what is a Revenue Stabilization Fund? It's a rainy day fund, okay? It's a restricted fund. It has triggers that define when it can be used. The basic trigger is an unexpected drop in revenue, generally 2% to 3% after your budget process is completed. It is a supplement to fill an unexpected hole. Why is it after your budget? Because if it's before your budget, your plan for it is part of your budget, which is what we're doing this year. We expect to see a revenue decrease. It funds all aspects of the county's needs, all departments, not a single department. When we don't collect money, it's not that we don't collect the school's money, or we don't collect planning and zoning money. All the money looks the same, but we can't collect it for the county. It's not a piggyback. It spreads the revenue problem over several years, not just one, and it has to be paid back. You have to pay the piper. It is not designed to be used for shortfalls such as those created by tax rate reductions. Next slide. When we made this budget, we made an education assumption. Areas such as transportation, number of drivers, number, length of day for teachers would drive up costs. Functions such as after-school activities and sports would not take place, and this would reduce costs. We will not have, as I've already said before, a clear view of how these net out until late October, early November, assuming the plan of operation is static. Because there is no clarity, the school's budget was funded essentially at the same level as 2020 for the first six months. It made no sense to go in and start whacking on things you don't know. Next slide. You can't produce a budget for one year without looking at what's going to happen to you coming down the pike. Fire and EMS, FTE is full-time equivalents. Those people, bodies, they're expensive. In 2016, in fire and EMS, we had 4.7. As of February of 2020, we had 22.1. That isn't going to stop. The question is, can we slow down the change? And in this year's budget, in the budget that we're squeezing on, we have over a half million dollars in new salaries for fire and EMS. County medical costs have gone up 24% in three years, you're looking at it. Now, we've got to stop, take that apart, and put it back together again, and the object is to slow down the rate of increase. We're not going to stop the rate of increase until America stops rating, rate of increase on medical coverage. We already have maintenance service contracts for 2022, okay, of $870,000. Those are already coming at us. We have future debt service increases from the current CIP. These are principally bus leases. So this is, these are the coming attractions. These are the things that we know we have to fund. Next slide. So here are the budget highlights. It's a complete budget. Plan A is called Get Me to December. Plan B, which is our Revenue Stabilization Fund, that's if things really go bad. We have a Plan B. This is the only opera, this is the only budget you're going to see with a Plan B. It's based on a tax rate of 85 cents and a collection rate of 92 cents. The real estate component is revenue neutral. The net revenue change from 2020 is minus $750,000. We're running on less money, not more. Schools are funded at slightly less than the 2020 transfer amount, .008. The county side of the budget is reduced 1.7%. Mr. Timberlake, the employee share of healthcare will be funded at a cost of $59,000. That is happening, okay? We agree with you. There has been confusion in this area. We have not done things the same way every year. Employees did not know what to expect. We are going to take a look at healthcare. We will establish the proper policies, but we felt like this had to be funded this year. A six-month higher increase on vacant positions, saving more than $300,000. Four new positions were requested, none were funded. Traveling mileage reduced 50%, saving more than $57,000. We have an unrestricted contingent fund of 292,000. What will we spend that for? Little leaks, little holes in the dike. And we have a Revenue Stabilization Fund, which is a restricted fund, will be created using school savings from the 2020 transfer and 2020 revenue from the fund balance in excess of 15% on the county side, approximately 2 million. We haven't set the number yet, but that looks like a reasonable number. So we will have a real Revenue Stabilization Fund. Now... And finally, if our budgets are done properly, they're more than just shifting numbers, slogans, optics, what looks good but has little value. It is about purpose. What are you trying to accomplish for the county? Could I have the next slide, please? This is a brand-new vision statement. We just approved this the other night. "We're a vibrant community that loves its relaxed rural lifestyle and is proud of its excellent public services. We're located at the edge of the metropolitan area with urban amenities close at hand, where a place where business can prosper and the stars are visible at night. This budget supports this station of excellent public service and the optimism that's embedded in it." Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Any questions on Version A?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Please.
Let's see. Brett and Charlotte, if you want to kick in. Brett, direct question. When we started budget talks, we were told 80 cents is revenue neutral. Why is that, and is that true?
That's the definition of that set in state code. So that's the definition we were using when beginning is what's in the state code.
So the state law, that's what state code is, the state law says, by their own definition, that revenue neutral is 80 cents, correct?
It has a formula that, when you put in our numbers for this year, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Chairman, I got a couple more.
Please.
Mr. Cox, this is about your property. You don't have to answer it, of course, it's, can be personal. 72 cents, you did bring up the fact that it's your household. Does that include your land? Is that a home value? Does that include discounts for farming? Because your property's not like most people's property.
That's the house.
Okay.
Which is the only thing that's not subject to land use, which would distort the numbers.
Hey, question. Healthcare, you said you've got healthcare covered, but I just looked while you were talking, and it's blank in the budget spreadsheet for Plan A. So did we change that? Does it need to be changed in the...
Ms. Norvik, I refer you to the slide. Yes, we are paying it.
How?
Because it's blank in the spreadsheet, so I just want to know how.
Well, we're not approving a spreadsheet tonight, Mr. Norvik. We have a contingent, we have a contingent fund of almost $300,000, Mr. Norvik.
Thank you, Ms. Norvik. Any other questions? Just chance, please, Mr. Barley.
I'm going to get on that same path with a question regarding the, what Mr. Cox just brought up, the contingency fund. Because on my spreadsheet that I have showed the contingency fund at 15,541 with a balance of 100,000. And I just see on the spreadsheet, it says 292,000. Is that what we've changed it to? I mean, I'm, I don't know, I'm just, that's not the number that I got on the spreadsheet, which come off of the first proposal that was published online. So the 292, how did we get to that point?
Simple. We took the excess funds, which if you looked at the excess fund lines, and it goes to the contingency fund. Okay, we had more revenue than we had expenditures.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Shadon, would it provide clarity at the time that we voted on the different versions to address Mr. Norvik's concern about what's on his spreadsheet as it relates to the health insurance increase that is to be borne, the way it appears on the spreadsheet now, by the employees? There's not an amount in there. Would it be correct to amend the spreadsheet to reflect that at the time of a vote so that that would be transparency for everybody to know that that is included in Version A?
I think, Charlotte, correct me if I'm wrong, what you'd be adopting is the resolution, so the most important thing would be making sure the resolution corresponds to what you wish to do, but certainly for transparency and make sure there's no confusion, you know, might want to state what that would include as far as health insurance or any other changes.
So if we, if we vote, then the people that were voting for it would state publicly what their drawers were as it pertained to picking up the health insurance increase for employees this year?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Would, Charlotte?
Since the, the total of your budget won't change, it's just taking it out of contingency and putting it in health insurance, and it won't change the totals on the resolution because the resolutions are in fund total, not by line item.
I want people to understand what they're voting on, so I'm going to request that when, if one vote is called, that people supporting this version of the budget, which I did, express...
Yes, sir.
...their drawers as it pertains to the intention of this budget to fund the employee increase for health insurance. Okay? Gentlemen, Ms. Carmack, any other questions? If not, we will go to Version B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barley.
Version B or Plan B is our reference, reference to it. What I tried to do in coming up with a proposal, to be fair to everyone, that's a pretty difficult thing to do in a budget that has so many moving parts, and it's a large budget. I didn't bring, I don't have a nice PowerPoint like Mr. Cox had, but it's pretty simple what I'm going to tell you of how I think Plan B is beneficial to the taxpayers in this county. The parts that seem to move around that we're having discussions about, the tax rate, the school board budget, the county budget, the $980,000, those things, that's the difficult part of this, to find out how do we arrive at something that's fair for everyone. My concerns are public safety, public service, the sheriff's department, the fire and EMS, and the schools. I know when I ran for election this past campaign, and I went and knocked on the doors, and pretty much most every door that I knocked on that had a taxpayer, citizen, constituent there that was relatively new to the county, new to me would be in the last 20 years. So that, they all said the same thing when I asked, what brought you to Palatine? Either number one or number two, it didn't make any difference, was schools and rural character, and that's why they come to this county. So there's a lot of validity to the schools. I agree with that. There's a lot of validity with the rural character, at least from everybody that I talked to. When you enter this budget, and I started looking back, and I look back over the past four years, what happened in the past four years where we borrowed $65 million, we have to pay that money back, and there's a lot... And there's a lot to pay in that money back. There's, I'm not even talking about interest included in that. But we built a new school, a beautiful new school. We built the transportation facility. We built a Sally Port down to the sheriff's office. We did a, bought and purchased a 911 communication system, new water tower. So we got a lot of nice things, and now we have to pay for them. I'm not the doom and gloom person by any means. If you know me, I'm not going to go to home plate with a bat in my hand and think I'm going to strike out. Okay? I'm going to go to home plate with a bat in my hand saying, I'm going to hit the ball somewhere. So I have a little bit more optimistic perspective than, say, Mr. Cox does. Level funding, we've heard those terms for three months now. Level funding, level funding, or maybe two months, I guess. Let me tell you my perspective with that and how it relates to school board. I think we need to maintain our relationship with the school board. We have a good relationship with the school board. Why do we have a good relationship? Because in 2015, there was a resolution written, and then it was amended in 2016. And actually, that's the Resolution R 201666, which is the agreement between the Board of Supervisors and the school board, which states they can keep the overage money that they save or cost avoidance or COVID, and that's how the money got accumulated. It doesn't matter how you look at that, the money's there. So I know that Mr. Cox made the statement that only taxpayer money, unless you have, it was, all the money's taxpayer money, I think, is what you referred to. And I, not that I disagree with that by any means because all the funding comes from the taxpayers, unless you have one of these agreements that's signed. When you have one of these agreements that's signed, this says that money goes to the schools. Now, yeah, we can change it. And likely to happen here, I will be voting to change it. I'll vote for the schools to keep their money. Taxpayer money, schools' money, however, there's an agreement that's written. And unless we vote on changing this before we vote on the budget, that's the agreement. I don't want any teachers to lose their job. I've said that multiple times. There's no reason for us to go down that path. I, I look at things with the schools. I know there's a lot of unknowns. I agree with Mr. Cox. There's an extreme amount of unknowns. In everything that's coming up, how much money are we going to collect? The Plan A suggested we're going to collect 92%. Plan B, I think, will be at 94%. In 2008, we had the Great Recession. And as Mr. Cox's slide showed, in 2008, the collection rate was 94%. That's the worst it's been since the treasurer, who's here in this county now, has been the treasurer 20-plus years. I asked Ms. Barton, and that's the first, that's the worst it's ever been. In 2008, for those of you who were living in Palatine County in 2008, if you can recall back, I went to the school, a couple of people who were on the school board in 2008. And I know Ms. Smith, sitting in the audience, referenced that's when her pay stayed the same from that point on. In 2008, Palatine County laid off, Palatine County Public Schools laid off 103 staff members. I don't think we're at that point, folks. I don't think we're there at all. In 2008, Palatine County Public Schools cut staff's pay 3%. I don't think we're there, folks. I don't think we need to do that. And with the plan that I'm, I'm putting forward, I think it, you'll see where I'm going with this momentarily. But at 92%, in listening, in all due respect to Mr. Cox's plan, and, and I'll tell you right now, everybody up here, I've heard the word transparency. We may not have been transparent. I might agree with you on that with everything that's not been said in meetings. But I will not stand by and say that we didn't try. Everybody up here has put a lot of effort in. And the school board has done exactly the same thing. It's been an immense amount of effort that's been put forward for this. And it's been a, I talked to Ms. Schubert, and she says, never had a budget like this before, Mike. So it's just, it's a difficult set of circumstances, and none of us want to make a mistake. But we're going to move forward. And Palatine County will be fine. It will be okay. We'll have a bump in the road, a curve in the road, but we're going to be all right. As you're guessing about that 92% or 94% or whatever the collection rate's going to be, I think, you know, what I hear from, from Plan A is, Plan A says, well, we've got unemployment. We have, you know, uh, no growth expected. According, I think, Mr. Cox said in a joint meeting that Federal Reserve says, don't expect growth until 2022. Bankruptcies, foreclosures, unemployment, all those things happened in '08, too. I mean, it was a difficult time, the Great Recession. The real estate assessments took a nosedive and fell off a cliff, didn't they? I think so, yeah. I'm pretty sure they did. And when they did, the real estate assessments dove down dramatically. The real estate tax went straight up, pretty much all at one time. I want to try to be fair to everybody. Everybody's got to participate. The schools, the public, safety, fire, rescue, sheriffs, everybody, the county. We all have to participate. As unscientific as it is, I did a Facebook poll, which many of you know, I, I try to be pretty active on there. I put on there, and it was very generic. Do you want to rate over 84 or below 84? And we all know there's a lot more information to apply to that. But it was 206 respondents to that. 179 people in this county said they wanted it to go below 84 cents. That's 87%. When we talk about all these numbers, there's a lot of math that gets involved. We got a new county administrator coming in, and we have the finance director right here, who are finance geniuses. Well, there's a lot of games get played with numbers. There's a lot of things that you can do to manipulate numbers. There's a lot of things that can happen to create a different picture than what the real picture really is. So if you're going to look at it, look at it all. Don't look at part of it. Don't look at some of it. Don't look at a silo. Don't look at a tunnel vision view of it. Look at it all. I'll go through my budget real, real quick here. The, if you look at what's up there, it's easier for me to tell you because I can't see that, and I've got glasses on, too. But the, the budget that Plan B, as it's referred to, is a 1.8% cut from last year's budget. And the proposed amount is $55,343, $343,159. That's $265,000 less than Plan A. And why do I refer to Plan A? No disrespect, Mr. Cox. I really haven't seen too much of Plan C's scenario. The, um, the $265,000, that's pretty substantial because that's taxes. The schools, yes. I'm the guy that says, let's cut the schools $653,000. So do I want to tell you that's 2.8% of the county transfer? Or do I want to tell you that's 1.3 of the budget? 1.3% of the budget. So here's your numbers. Is it 1.3% of the entire budget of the schools? Is it 2.8 of the county transfer amount? It's whatever way you want to look at it. It's $653,000. I can't spend or do anything. I can't make a deposit with a percentage. I can put money in the bank if you talk dollars. The, the school's a big issue to a lot of people that's in this room and watching us through Zoom. I'll come back to that in a moment. The healthcare, when the plans first come out, Mr. Timberlake, the healthcare, I had it in there. Nobody else had it in there. I put it in. I talked to the sheriff, and I talked to the undersheriff. And I ask, tell me, don't tell me what you need. Tell me what you can't do without. And I agree that every employee in this county should have the healthcare paid for. I'm sorry you can't get the 2% raise this year. But maybe next year, we can work it out, okay? The, the next page. I'm a proponent of, I'm willing to put the $122,000 out for the wages for, I talked to Chief Warner also, for his pay and part-time wages. In my conversation with the sheriff, there was a few things. A deputy. We're down a couple deputies. We have the potential to go down a couple more. The safety of you all is critical. That's important to me. I'm going to tell you that right now. So I don't want our sheriff's department to be down. There's a 24-man patrol, and you start taking two guys or ladies out of that, and then all of a sudden, that changes a lot of things. And if two more go out, or one more goes out, what do we do? So I'm in favor of keeping, adding a deputy. I'm in favor of putting, taking care of what the sheriff's office requested for compression pay, $33,000. I'm in favor of the Board of Supervisors taking a 5% pay cut. It's $3,391. We don't make the million like some of you think we do. It's a 5% cut, and it's $3,391. We had an executive assistant who was secretary, executive assistant of previous county administrator. She's no longer with us. She hadn't been with us, and she, her position hasn't been filled. I'm in favor of filling that. I do want to thank Ms. Dobbins, because I spoke with her also, Sheriff Nunley, and Chief Warner for your time and the information that you shared with me. Because it's the people that work for this county that this is going to have a lot of effect on, too. And the morale, yeah, I agree. Morale needs to stay up. But you know what? Good leaders keep morale up. It'll happen. Good leaders will keep them up there. Animal control, yes, $12,000. A difference between Plan B and Plan A. $10,000 was requested from the emergency 911 communication system. I wasn't in favor of funding that $10,000 worth of overtime. Mr. Cox was, for Plan A. The, um, in my conversation with Chief Warner, fire rescue training, auto parts and repairs. And these seem like small amounts, but these dollars add up. And they have to do with the safety and the education system of this county. Training, we requested, I think, $35,000. I've got $30,000. Parts, we requested $50,000. I, I looked at maybe $40,000 to try and be fair. That's what I'm trying to do, is be fair. Everybody's suffering. Everybody's having a hard time. There's many people who don't have jobs, and they don't have income. And they have struggles in their own life. I don't want to raise the taxes on those people. Recycling, we all agree, $44,000, that's got to be in. Law library, I think Plan A's $5,600 for a law library. I put zero in the law library. The training in the sheriff's department, when I talked to Sheriff Nunley, there's a mandate coming up in August where he's going to have to train. It's not going to, as most things, from what I hear, the state mandates it never pays for it. Let's pay to get them trained. We need, we need our deputies trained. And then we get to the wonderful thing called Revenue Stabilization Plan. I am totally against going against our, our current agreement. I don't agree with that. I've voiced that multiple times, and hopefully people understand that. I'm putting $150,000 in a Revenue Stabilization Plan. We can create a Revenue Stabilization Plan. We can use the criteria that Mr. Cox has up there. I'm very amenable to go to whatever the board agrees to in how, what stipulations we have on it. The stipulation could be, you know, how much we could disperse at one time, you know, what you can use it for, how much you can take out. All of those, I'm fine with that. You hear that rainy day fund comment? And I don't know. There's something about me that, if I told, if I told you I was going to start a savings account and it's raining, and I need to put all this money in a savings account when it's raining to be in a rainy day fund, it's raining now. Why am I going to put all the money in there now? I need to pay for the education system in this county. We need to be able to fund the public safety. There's multitudes of things, county, employees, parks, rec, and it just goes on and on. So that's my stance on that. Contingency fund, I've got $232,000 in a contingency fund. The one thing about the contingency fund, which I was questioning Mr. Cox with Plan A, is 292. This one that I've worked on, B, is 232,000. The funds are there. You can't just spend them. You have to come to the board to ask for approval on that, to make sure that it's acceptable by the board. So it's not like it's just a piggy bank up there to do that. Salary adjustments. Somebody in this county retires, and we got to pay a little early payout on them, $50,000. We put that in there. It said zero, I think. Here's, that's, that's the gist of it. Couple more things, and I'll be done, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your indulgence. Listen to me closely because there's the numbers. Plan A versus Plan B. Plan A takes $980,000 out of the schools. $188,000 out of the schools. Debt amount is what's in the schools. Not, it's in the county's budget, but the schools are the ones that have access to that money, according to the resolution. And there's stipulations to that. In Plan B, you're going to cut $653,000 out of the school's operating budget. But you're going to keep $980,000, which there's stipulations to that. There's one-time expenses to that $980,000, unless this board decides to relax that for a year. The $980,000 stays in the capital reserve fund for the schools. The $653,000 is cut from the operating budget. That means you have $327,000 more funds available in the school system. The difference between 980 and 653 is 327. If you take the 1.1 million that's not there in the schools, and then in Plan A, and you take the $327,000 that is there in B, that's a $1,495,000 swing of funds available. That's a lot of money that's available to the schools. Plan B versus fiscal year 20, schools. Fiscal year 20, schools, $23,300, no, no, excuse me, total budget. The school's total budget, the money they had, that this fiscal year ends tomorrow, school year 1920. The schools had $48,206,597 in their budget. They used all of it, but 980,000, I guess, or pretty close to there, give or take, however that breaks out. But in the budget that we're in right now, the schools... But in the budget that we're in right now, the schools, fiscal year 20, ends tomorrow, $653,000 Plan B comes out of that. The schools are getting $571,000 more dollars from the state and feds. So let's add that back in. So I'm taking 48,206,597, I'm subtracting the 653,000 operation reduction, which is the 2.8% reduction or the 1.3% reduction, however you want to look at it. The 571,188 more that the schools are getting this year, that gives you a total of $48,124.76. That's $82,000 less than you had to operate Palatane County Public Schools this year. That's $82,000 less than you had to operate the schools. That's 99.8% of the money you had this year to operate the schools with Plan B. Here's the kicker. You still get to keep the $980,000 too. Now, there's something that I don't think, I, I don't remember seeing in Mr. Cox's, uh, slide, but there's also the fact of CARES money that's out there. The schools are projected to get $233,000 in CARES Act money. It's probably going to come around in August. Reimbursement for supplies. The county has received $2.5 million in CARES Act money. It's going to get split up. Some of it's going to go to the schools, some of it's going to go to the county. You have to justify and explain and have records of how you spent that money associated with COVID-19. I asked our finance director what the conservative number was that she thought the schools might get. $500,000. That's the conservative number. I don't know how many kids are not coming back to school this year for homeschool. I, I don't know the collection rate. I feel extremely strong that it will be 94% or better. In the worst year ever, 2008, it was 94, 94%, maybe not ever, at least in the last 20-plus years. And we laid off 103 teachers, cut their pay 3% in the school system. And I don't think we're there, folks. I think Plan B is a good plan and I hope I can garner some support from the other members on this board for Plan B. And I'll make sure of one thing that you guys understand from Mike Byerly. You, the taxpayers and the citizens of this county, you are my number one customer. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Byerly. I'm going to ask Charlotte and Brett to please provide to the audience information about the CARES program and how the money is going to be distributed in the community.
Sure, yes. So at your board meeting last week, you approved a plan that we had put together with emergency management coordinator. And I'll pull that up real quick, I can summarize how that was distributed. So essentially we got about 2.5 million. So in this plan, we would allocate about 40% of that to labor. So that would be to cover the existing labor for employees that have had to change their roles in one way or another to respond to the pandemic. Then 517,000 and change would go to citizen support subgrants. So those would be through nonprofits and other groups like that, such as potentially Backpacks for Love, Free Clinic, Habitat for Humanity, others through DSS to help citizens that are in need during this time. Then an equal amount, 517,000 and change would go to business grants. So those would be small businesses located in the county could apply for assistance through those. Then about 10% would be materials and supplies, 5% PPE, 3% facility improvements, so things like Sneeze Guards, any changes we've had to make, 1% for contracts, things like special cleaning, 1% fund administration for the grant administration, and 1% for other. So again, this doesn't delineate schools versus county, but certainly a significant portion of this, I think, would, would make sense to go to schools because they're having reimbursable expenses as well.
Uh, expenses would be for things that are COVID-related, right?
Direct has to be related.
It wouldn't be to offset any operating expenses that they have today. It's just the ones that were, uh, that were accelerated by the COVID, directly line, you have to have that direct line to that expenditure, for that expenditure. Any questions for Mr. Byerly?
Mr. Chairman.
Please, Ms. Comma.
I would just like to make a point of, I guess, a little, little concern regarding the $650,000. I spoke with Dr. Jones and several school board members and they're more concerned right now with operating costs. And the problem with the savings, yeah, okay, say we, we give the savings back to the schools, they can't use that for operating costs. That's the only catch. I mean, they need, so from what I gathered, they would rather have the $650,000 to put towards the teacher salaries and that sort of thing. Coupled with the fact that concerns them is when we budget next year, they're going to be $650,000 further in the hole. So systemically, that would have more of an impact on them. So when I spoke with them, they were fine, fine, but they were, you know, amenable to the fact of us keeping the savings for the revenue stabilization fund. So just, I just wanted to point that out as kind of a concern or just sort of a note.
Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, one, one point of information as we talk about the schools' savings and their maintenance reserve fund, they, before we start counting for this year, before we start looking at this year, and by the way, this year is, at this point is 1.1 million dollars is what they are forecasting that they will have, that that can possibly go into that fund. They currently have $840,000. So as we start talking about moving the savings from 2020, they still have a significant amount of money to take care of problems that may come up. And we fully expect the program to go back to where it was next year. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. I'm going to reserve my comments when we get to that on the agenda to vote on. Any other questions for version B?
Mr. Chairman, can I respond, please?
Please.
Thank you. I agree, and, and I'm not, to me, I, I thought everybody understood, the 980,000 is a capital reserve fund.
Capital minus reserve.
And it's, um, for one-time expenses. And when I hear you're going to have a 1.5, you're going to have a one and a half million dollars swing in money and you want to pass that up so that you can have whatever the difference between 650 and 188,000 is, 400 and some thousand for operating expense, that just seems odd to me. I get that you want to be able to pay the teachers, but a one and a half million dollar swing and you're going to give that up, not support that, seems strange. But the capital maintenance reserve fund is for one-time spending. So one-time spending that the schools could use that for, I would think would be laptops. That's a one-time occurrence. I know in listening to the school board at the last meeting, some of how they didn't spend the 980,000 was they didn't refinish the gym floors and they didn't paint the school. I don't know how many schools they didn't paint, maybe it was one, maybe it was more. But those are also one-time expenses, uh, not recurring. And when you have, 840,000 is what they have in their account now, I agree with Mr. Cox, the ability to put another 980 in there, I just recall back to the time, three years ago, when the chiller went out at the high school and they didn't call Palatane County and say, hey, we need $300,000. They reached into their capital maintenance reserve fund and paid for the chiller. You know, they had to come before the board and get approval because the, the board has control over that. But it's a one-time expense and it was there for that emergency or rainy day fund. And so I find it quite interesting that the schools give up a 1.5 million dollar swing so that they can have $188,000. There's a lot of ways to skin a cat, so to speak. But I, I, I'm, you know, I'm of the opinion, if you've got 1.5 million dollars, I'll find a way to get through 12 months and I'll take the 1.5 million.
I'm sorry, Ms. Byerly, go ahead.
Thank you. That, that, that's all, well, the other, I will make one other point. For the taxpayers, it's 82 cents is the real estate tax rate in Plan B, 82 cents. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Schubert, how much is in the schools' capital maintenance reserve fund today?
$840,216.
Thank you. Unless there's any more questions for version B, we're going to go to version C, uh, that was sponsored recently by Ms. Norvik. Ms. Norvik?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, I see you've got my presentation coming up. Go in slide view whenever you can. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce a Plan C. Does everybody have a copy?
Yes, sir.
And we have spreadsheets here if y'all didn't have a spreadsheet. I've got some here, okay? Thank you, Brett and Charlotte, for working up a resolution form. I appreciate the extra effort. I didn't ask for it and you showed good initiative and it looks really nice. So thank you. I was going to be content with making adjustments to the existing resolutions, but this makes it even easier. All right, so Plan C, we'll call it. And Plan C, I'll run through this and I'm going to compare it a little bit to Plan A and I hope to speak in very understandable terms. First of all, when we've been coming up with these plans, Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, I think we maybe need to change the way the board does business because I hadn't really seen a Plan A until the middle of last week. I would have really liked a week ago today to have hashed out some numbers, which is what I was kind of expecting when I showed up. Uh, I think we can have these discussions in public, in front of people, that's the way we should do it. I don't think we need to spring a plan on a certain number of people. We can be adults in the room, I can throw my ideas out, you can throw yours out. We should be crafting a budget as a team. This is a team sport. It's not multiple teams, it's not individual sports, and that's kind of the flavor this one took on. We've had months, we've had extra time to look at this. And so that's my comment. I think we need to be more transparent and work together better. All right, here's my first slide. You've heard a bit about it, but we have a lot of people that are watching from home or who are going to be watching this on YouTube on the archive. So just get back to basics here with me for a second. First, let's understand the tax rate and how that works. Your taxes on real estate are tied to home assessed values, which have been rising, if you look at the slide. Um, I'm going back 10 years with most of my comments tonight. You go back to 2011 because we're doing the 21 budget tonight. You can see home values rising and rising and rising since what many call the Great Recession. Little dip because of the COVID thing, but the forecast is to come back fairly strong. Talked with two realtors here in Palatane and they agreed with that line. Home assessments just went up 16% this year. I heard Mr. Cox say a different number, but that's the number I went with, that's the number that we first heard, and that's the number that the public understands right now. As recently as today on Nextdoor, I saw 16% being kicked around. So I'm going to stick with that number. To offset this year's increase, the tax rate would have to be lowered from 88 cents to 80 cents per hundred. I just checked on that 80 cent number, it's a good number, it's the, the one prescribed by Virginia law. The red arrow you see right there points to the zip code 23139. I put that into a, a home value calculator. I used Zillow.com, I used Realtor.com and a couple other reputable internet pages. So that's how your tax rate works. It's tied directly to your home value. Home value's been going up for 10 years and specifically it really went up this year. Okay, John? All right, so my plan, Plan C, if you will, um, that is a no-tax hike plan. It's at 80 cents and it assumes 94%. So that would be revenue neutral according to Virginia. So before we look at the no-tax plan that I'm introducing, let's take a look at the proposed 85 cent option real quick. Thanks. 85 cent plan effect on your taxes looks like this. In 2011, the median real estate taxes, according to Zillow, you'd be paying $1,825 here in Palatane in one year. If Plan A went into effect with 85 cents today and into next year, your taxes would be 2,570. That is a 10% increase in taxes right now. That is a 40% increase over 10 years. Somebody might be thinking, well, yeah, but what about inflation? Next slide, please. There's your inflation since 2010. We had one spike of 3%. Inflation has been very, very low and the Fed has put interest rates down towards zero. So 40% in 10 years, that is an enormous tax increase, especially for a rural community like this. Next slide, please. All right, the 85 cent tax plan has in it what I call tax creep or in the military we used to call it mission creep, where you tiptoe into a situation and then the enemy gets a vote too and suddenly things start escalating a little more than you planned and so you send in more troops or more ships or more tanks. Next thing you know, you got a big fight on your hands. That's, that's what mission creep is in the military. Tax creep works kind of the same way. I just showed you on the slide that the real estate tax increase, that the median home value person is paying is 745 more a year. Okay? Now think about the fixed income citizen. We actually had somebody speak on that tonight. The effect on inflation during that time, that 10 years, if you retired in 2011 and had a median income of 49,200, which is a good number for Palatane in 2011, you would now need an income of 56,080 for the same buying power at the store. That's an increase of $7,080 a year. So the total effect with the 85 cent plan and inflation is you now need $7,825 more a year of income in order to live the same way you did in 2011. People on fixed income can't do that. Poor people on fixed income can't even begin to do that and they start making those tough decisions you hear about. Do I buy medicine? Do I buy food? Do I heat my house or not? I have people like that in District 2 and I've heard from them. I've heard from them as recently as today. Not everybody is solid middle-class or upper-middle-class. Oh, what the heck, another $125 a year, another whatever the, the figure was, 50 cents a day, which turns into 100 and some dollars a month, which, you know, 100 and some dollars a year. There's a lot of people that can't do that year over year over year over year. And I'll tell you right now, I hear the same voices saying the same thing every budget year. This is my sixth budget and it's always the same refrain, hey, it's only, you know, 3 cents an hour. Anybody can do 3 cents an hour. And then you do the math and you do that year over And then you do the math and you do that year over year and that's what I'm talking about with mission creep. Pretty soon, 10 years goes by and somebody on fixed income is paying $745 a year more. Okay? That's what I'm trying to avoid. We're way out of whack here, in my opinion, in Powhatan and 85 cents is unacceptable to me. But, next slide. We've been talking for a number of years of the 92-8 ratio. What is that? In Powhatan, 92% of the taxes are paid by residents, you homeowners, 8% by commercial other sources. So 92-8 is also out of whack. Now we're thinking of raising taxes from revenue neutral 80 to 85 cents, a 10% tax raise. That puts that 92, 92-8 number even more out of whack than it is right now. I've been hearing from members on this board, and I, I saw things in the newspaper during campaigns, that 92-8 was unacceptable. And now we're going in the wrong direction? I don't understand that. I, I do not understand that kind of thinking. A promise on a campaign trail should be a promise once in office. Next slide. Thanks. All right, in my opinion, raising taxes this much is the lazy way. This is the easy way. If you have funding shortages, what the heck, just raise taxes, make the numbers balance out, we just go ahead and spend the money. That's the lazy way. It takes a lot of creativity to do it differently than that. You can place the burden again on the homeowner, like we've been doing for 10 years, but here's my question. I've been hearing, you know, the 92% assumption in the 85 cent plan, Plan A. Here's my question, isn't it ironic that the 85 cent plan assumes a 92% collection rate? And I think Mr. Carver talked about this, because homeowners have been hard-hit financially by COVID, yet to solve the problem, the plan proposes a 10% tax hike on those very same homeowners. That makes no sense whatsoever. Okay? We're assuming they're not even able to pay their mortgage, or we're going to slap a 10% tax hike on them. Philosophically, that, that's completely insensible. All right, next slide, please. I, I think there's a better way. So never come with a problem unless you bring the solution with you. So, next slide. 80 cent plan highlights, so this would be my Plan C. No tax hike, 94% collection rate. The total school revenue is at the requested level funding. That takes into account the state, federal, and other sources. Extracurricular programs are funded, that's up to the school board, but if it were me, I wouldn't be getting anything there. No layoffs are required, again, that's a school board decision. I wouldn't be doing it. New revenue stabilization funds, I think we should set up for both the county and the schools. If it's a good idea for one, should be a good idea for the other. Okay, do I still have a slide next? Okay, little bit more detail for those that want it. I would like to set a revenue neutral tax rate at 80 cents per hundred. Assume a 94% collection rate, that is a known '08 recession number. Level fund the schools as requested, using the total revenues from fiscal year 20. So that takes into account the increase from state, federal, and other. That would be a number of 48,206,597. I would like to see this board create two revenue stabilization funds, one on the county side, one on the school side. These would be used only during declarations of emergency. So they wouldn't turn into some slush fund that, you know, you can change the rules here and there on. I think we should share the $980,000 equally. That's the surplus from the school closings this spring that you've heard, talked about tonight. Why equally? Well, the intent of any extra money from the schools going into their capital maintenance reserve fund, the intent was to reward the schools for sound fiscal management. This year is a complete anomaly. It is completely without precedent. That $980,000 was partially due to good fiscal management over on the school side, but not totally. Nobody knew we were going to shut the lights off and buses weren't going to be using fuel. So I think to be fair, we split that money. And what that does, in my opinion, it still gives the schools incentive not to use the burn-down technique, not to spend it or lose it. So they're still going to want to watch their pennies because they get a reward from that. Those monies during the declaration of emergency can be used immediately to cover shortages in the county and/or the school's budget. So what you have is discretionary funding, but with a specific purpose under specific conditions. They could use this immediately for operational use. All right? And then last, I would like to contribute a share to offset the rise in healthcare costs. I have a little over half a chunk. That's all the money I could find, but in 90 days, I'm willing to take a look at that first because I know what it is to have part of your paycheck, basically it's a pay cut because of rising healthcare costs. It happened to me this year. I also was examining whether I wanted to be in the county plan a little over a month ago and during the open enrollment period, I really would have liked to have known if that was going to be covered by the county or not. So a couple of you brought up that point and it's a good point. It's unfair at this point. So I would like to help out with the healthcare costs with this plan now and a little bit more during the year. So, next slide, please, John? All right. A word about the revenue stabilization funds. We've been kicking those around. That would be new for this county. It's a great idea. It's a great idea to have one, but we're too late. All right? The time to gather nuts is before winter, not during. That horse left the barn. And I had to laugh when Mr. Byler was talking about a rainy day because I know it was on the slide. It's a great idea to save for a rainy day, but it's pouring down right now. We need that money now. We should have saved it last year and the year before and the year before. We didn't think about it. To be fair, we already have 15% reserve built in to the budget. That's so our bond rating doesn't decrease. We keep at least that much, makes the bond companies comfortable. And if you start eating into that, you jeopardize your bond rating, which means when you go to borrow again, it's going to be a higher interest, higher cost. So the point is, I thought, and I think some others thought, we had a reserve fund for rainy day. Turned out not to be so. You need a rainy day fund on top of the rainy day fund, in reality. So we didn't do it. We didn't know to do it, but now we do. We learned the hard way here. So I'm for setting up a revenue stabilization fund on both sides, school and county side, but use a portion of it now to cover the, the stopgap spending that's required right now and then continue funding it as the future economy permits. I'm also a little bit more optimistic than what I heard on the 85 cent plan. Times are hard, but I also know what people in Powhatan are made of. I also know what Americans are made of. We have an incredible economy in America. We have an incredible amount of wealth in this country and more than that, we have a lot of independent spirit. There are people who lost their business that I predict will be back in business very, very soon. I, I'm just optimistic, I'm upbeat on what this country will do and how they'll respond. We already see signs of a sluggish recovery. I, I just don't see the doom and gloom maybe that some others do. So also as a reminder, Mr. Byler brought it up and Mr. Williams kind of refined it a little bit, but we do have CARES Act money coming. It will help. Money will go for, let's say, a one-time use of laptops or mobile hotspots. Okay, we have to use it for that, it's a one-off. However, we didn't have to use our operating fund, our general fund. We didn't have to dip in a contingency fund for that. So that does help. It does help our bottom line, even though there's restrictions on that. So everything I've mentioned ignored, everything in my plan, Plan C, that I'm presenting tonight, it ignores the CARES Act and that's only going to help us out. So anyway, thank you for the time. Thank you again for staff for working up the resolution and printing it up so nice. And I really think that laying the tax burden on people that we promised not to and unnecessarily so, I think probably Plan C with no tax hike is a prudent and still conservative way to go and I'm recommending the board adopt that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norvik. Questions for Mr. Norvik?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I could a comment or two.
Please.
Being a senior citizen on fixed income, I understand mission creep, but I also understand that projecting a tax rate out 10 years and no change probably doesn't reflect reality. But the most interesting thing about Plan C is it doesn't have enough revenue to cover the expenses. It is $425,000 in debt. And so this plan then says, wow, I'll establish a piggy bank and I'll go move that money over here and that'll fix the problem. Rather than addressing the true cost and the fact that Plan C, the tax rate has been pushed down so low that it doesn't cover the operating costs that Plan C has. So there's a big hole in it. It's not properly funded and so, you know, I want to use one-time money. Wow. That pushes the problem forward and it doesn't solve the problem. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, response?
Mr. Norvik.
Okay, on purpose, and I did put a notation in the spreadsheet, maybe you didn't see it. I am proposing, again, to use the revenue stabilization fund now, immediately. It's raining, this is the rainy day. That would be $490,000, which more than covers the quote-unquote "hole" and then I put in there, any excess can go into the contingency fund. So you don't see it in the budget Plan C because you don't put the $980,000 that we saved in the schools closing because it, for one, it's spring of fiscal year 20, not 21, and for another, we haven't passed a resolution on it. So you don't see it in the budget because it doesn't belong in the budget, but that is exactly how I've proposed in the notations to use that money. And it's the same thing that y'all would do. You're talking about setting up a revenue stabilization fund so that if things get that bad, we can dip into the piggy bank and use that money to cover the gap. That's exactly what I'm doing, but the difference is, I'm proposing to do it right now. We actually end up with more money. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Cox? I did, in fact, read the notation and that was my point. The difference between Plan C is its operating costs are not covered by its revenues. It has to go find some one-time money to make it balance. Plan A has enough revenue to cover its ongoing costs. And so the piggy, the stealing of the piggy bank approach simply moves the problem down the road. It does not address it where it needs to be addressed, which is today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
If I may, Mr. Norvik.
You're the chairman.
I'd like to ask staff a question. Are we using one money, one-time money to fund an operating budget in this version?
In Plan C?
Yes, ma'am.
If, if we're using the, the $490,000, half of the savings from the year before, yes, sir.
Okay. Follow-up question. Is that a, something that you want to do when you're doing an operating budget? I mean, I was always taught that that's a no-no.
It's not ideal because in the following year, you would have to make up that revenue in your tax base.
In your revenues. So you, you're putting off coming up with those revenues that you're going to have to come up with next year, right?
Yes, sir.
And then if you're setting your stabilization fund to be a certain percentage, you would have to come up with that additional revenue to bring your revenue stabilization fund up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Norvik?
Correct. You are doing a one-time movement of money to cover one year's budget. Next year, I don't expect to have a 94% collection rate and that's the difference. So yeah, as a general rule, you don't use one-time monies to put into an operating budget. I understand that. I'm using the revenue stabilization fund as the shock absorber to allow us to get through a very difficult economic year, hoping that next year, and I'm optimistic, that next year we'll have a much better than 94% collection rate and your money will be there and we'll be creating a new budget. Don't forget that. It won't be this budget next year, it'll be a new budget next year. So it's invalid. I'm using the stabilization fund for exactly what it was designed to do. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Ms. Callback.
One thing I would like to point out, my concerns with giving half of the savings to the schools to have them start a revenue stabilization fund. The schools don't stabilize revenue. They're not a revenue generator. The schools take revenue. So for them to have a revenue stabilization fund, what are they stabilizing? We are the ones that give the money to the schools. So I just want to point that out. I would not be in support of using half of that as a stabilization fund for the schools.
That is correct. And again, I'm going to defer discussion on that till we get to it, you know, later on, you know, going down the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Norvik.
I, I'm not trying to run the meeting, that's your job, but if we are about to adopt a budget, then it won't matter when we get to the next resolution about the school budget and, and all that. So I'd like to address that now.
I understand, please.
Can I address it now?
Yeah, I'm, I'm said for myself, Mr. Norvik.
Oh, okay. All right, so thank you for the time. Karen, the answer to your question is, the schools, as I said, and I think this is an important point, to grab the $980,000 and just take it goes against the grain of the written policy that we have in place right now. Some of that money did come from good management over on the school side and I want to keep the incentive and the morale, to be honest, on the school side, that if they save money, if they do a good job, that money doesn't disappear over the fence to the county side, never to be seen again. And you can also kind of take comfort from the fact that the stabilization fund on the school side, if we set it up similar to the policy for the CMR fund, all the appropriations have to come through the board of supervisors. So they can't just spend it with no discretion whatsoever. They can only appropriate or actually spend the money with approval from the board of supervisors. So we're not losing control totally of that money, but I think it's fair. I, I think they should get some of that, but mostly the schools were affected and like I said, some of that was some good management. To, to just take it all, that just doesn't sit well with me. It feels like stealing. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions or discussion on version C? I'll make one comment before we move on. I'm now a vote to establish revenue stabilization funds for every department for the schools where I'm counting. The money comes through the board of supervisors, we appropriate those monies. Now, if we find ourselves in a situation in November where bottoms are the tub, larger hole than what we expected, we will be the people that have to make the decisions about how to use the revenue stabilization fund for the county and that includes the schools. That's our biggest customer and I've said that before. So they'll be first in line if we have some type of revenue shortfall because it's such a huge percentage of our budget. Now, if the money remained over with the schools and we needed the money over here for public safety, you know, for the sheriff's department, for firefighters, I wouldn't have access to it because the schools, they don't appropriate money to the departments. We do that. Now, in terms of, this is a one-time deal. Now, in terms of, this is a one-time deal. All of us know we've never been in a place like this since the Old Testament. We know we're going back to the policy next year, so the incentive is going to be there. But this year, we have to plan for the county. And the money has to be there because if it's not there, we're not going to go and raise taxes in the middle of the year. That's not going to happen. The money is there so we can get to the fiscal year, so that we can get out to that swoosh, and that's what it's looking like, the Nike swoosh. It's not looking like a V-shaped recovery, so that we can get to the June collections where it may be about a situation for the county. But we have to plan for the worst and hope for the best. And I'd like to also thank all board members because we're basically planning without complete information, as Mr. Cox said. We don't know. If you go out there and you ask the economists, good luck on that. So we're trying to plan for the first six months, make sure that we're in a position where we can get through the fiscal year, make sure that the money is there to fund an unknown form of education in this county. Because we don't even know now what that looks like. We can't get clus-- Dr. Jones's frustration is, he doesn't know, he can't get answers from downtown. And he's got a 140-page document of all these guidelines, regulations about what we're supposed to do, like 10 people on a bus, what classrooms look like. We still don't know. So these are very difficult, frustrating times for all of us, and every one of us are trying to do the best thing for the county. I'm sure the school board's doing the same thing. But again, we're one county, and we're going to get through this. Mark it down, okay? All right. So with that, I will go to the next thing on our agenda, which is we'll go into our presentation where we will actually be voting on a version of the FY '21 budget. Mr. Shardine.
Would you be looking for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Shardine, would you? Again, we're going to be looking at, and again, an oral receipt of proposals for the FY '21 budget. So it would be appropriate to have a motion, if anybody wishes to make one, on Version A.
I would like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Carmack.
I move that the board approve R-2020-38A.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Shardine, would you call the roll?
Mr. Nordvig.
Definitely no.
Mr. Byerly.
No.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Shardine. Your next item? On the job budget, the school budget?
Yep. So the next item is the resolution for the remainder of the school budget, since initially, as you recall, the board had approved the 90%. So this one, there are two versions in your packet, as well as the one in front of you, Version C, that would correspond with various budgets. So that would be Resolution R-2020-41A would be the corresponding resolution for the school budget towards what you just approved in the last motion.
Could I have a motion, please?
Can I just say so moved after what he just said, or do I have to read the-- what is the-- is that fine? Okay, that's fine.
Do I have a second on a motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Shardine, call the roll, please.
Mr. Nordvig.
Abstained because it doesn't match the budget that I approve of, and it-- so I can't really vote on this.
Mr. Byerly.
No.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Shardine, move to C.
Okay. So then this would be the motion fixing the fiscal year 2021 real estate tax rate. So the resolution that would correspond would be, again, A, so R-2020-37A.
Do I have a motion?
You have a motion, sir.
Second.
Second on motion. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Shardine, call the roll.
Mr. Nordvig.
No.
Mr. Byerly.
No.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Item D, Mr. Shardine, Resolution Temporary Suspending the School Board Capital Reserve Fund Policy, R-2020-39. Could you please explain the resolution?
So this one, it's relatively brief. I can just read the whole resolution if you like.
Please.
Resolution approving the reallocation of School Board FY '20 savings to the Revenue Stabilization Reserve, whereas the Board of Supervisors approved R-201666, establishing a School Board Capital Reserve Fund Policy, whereas the pandemic due to COVID-19 has created an unusual situation. Therefore, the savings from FY '20 will go into a Revenue Stabilization Reserve to be used in an event of decreased revenues. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors that the Powhatan County approve the suspension of this policy for a one-year term.
Do I have a motion from the board?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Please, Mr. Norvik.
I was in on creating this policy, and I consider this breaking a promise to the schools. And I personally think this is something that we're doing that is going to have an impact on trust in the future and violates the whole idea of having a principle. If you're going to change your principles when the going gets tough, you don't really have principles. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norvik. Any other comments on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Byerly.
Regarding the Revenue Stabilization motion on there, on the-- before us, it's been said that this revenue stabilization plan originated from Goochlin. And I don't know that that's true or not, but I do know that when I think about Goochlin, and there was somebody earlier talking about the tax rates. Goochlin's tax rate's 53%.
53 cents.
53 cents. Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. 53 cents. When I think of Goochlin, I don't think of Powhatan. Goochlin County, does anybody know how many Fortune 500 companies are in Goochlin County? How many Fortune 500 companies are in Powhatan? How about Goochlin, CarMax, Performance Food Group, Capital One? I don't think Luckstone is, but we have a Luckstone here, Hardywood, Republic Services. If you don't know Republic Services, that's landfill business. Let's go to another neighbor, Amelia. I think their tax rate is at 48 cents, 48 cents. They have a landfill too over in Amelia, just so you know. Cumberland's, looks like they're trying to get a landfill. Their tax rate's at 77. So the high tax rates around us are Henrico at 87, which I think they've had that tax rate since the 80s. Chesterfield at 95, and Powhatan, after tonight, at 85. I get concerned over, you know, wanting to be like some other county. I want to be Powhatan. I've lived here since 1962. I've watched a lot of things happen. I like Powhatan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Byerly. We have a motion. We've had a second. We've had discussion. Mr. Shardine, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Nordvig.
No.
Mr. Byerly.
No.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Okay. That brings us to appropriating the first quarter of the FY '21 budget, Versions A and B again. Mr. Shardine.
So again, R-2020-39A would correspond to the budget that you've approved this evening.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this motion? Mr. Shardine, call the roll.
Mr. Nordvig.
No.
Mr. Byerly.
No.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
That takes us to our second public comment period. I will open the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please give your name, your address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking for a group, please, we'll give you five minutes.
I spoke at the beginning because, like Jim said earlier, I think there was some not very good, clear information out there last week. So I owe you an apology that it wasn't today's plan. It was not in the spreadsheet that I got Thursday in an email. So that's where we were. Mr. Nordvig, I never saw Plan C until the spreadsheet tonight. So, Mr. Byerly, either I missed it, or it wasn't in that spreadsheet. But I thank you all for taking care of the health care for the employees. It's a huge step in the right direction. And I appreciate each of the, each of you's passion in the budget and the way it was presented tonight. I don't know that I agree with the 85 cents. I liked a lot of the things that I heard Mr. Byerly and Mr. Nordvig say. But I think we're at a spot where if we take a chance, there's not a chance to recover. So to look at it six months from now will help us, but don't stop with the ideas that you've started. That's what I would say. Because I think most people know I'm pretty dag-on conservative. And I do it in my home. I do it in my budget, in my office, in my work. And I do it with both of my two businesses that I run in this county, you know, one of which lost $15,000 in the last three months. I married off one of Mr. Byerly's last year and had a great time at his party.
Well, maybe if you wouldn't knock over my mailbox with a snowplow, things would be better.
I try, you know, I pick yours out.
It's pretty simple. Just charge more money.
Charge more money. Is that what it is?
All right, all right. Thank you.
I'm Rocky Gary, 1826 Hennepin Drive, Powhatan. Before the COVID-19 flew over the cuckoo's nest, we had the greatest economy in the history of the world. I'm going to tell you, it's going to come back. That's the only thing that's holding it back. The only thing that's holding it back right now, and he did it without any help, from this Communist Party that they call Democrats, it's going to come back, and it's going to come back tenfold. And so I urge you to be more optimistic about the money you're going to collect. And I'd say, if you've got a problem with collecting money, do a better job going out there and collecting it. I would also propose, if you have to raise a meals tax, I don't know if we have a meals tax in Powhatan. Do we have one? I think we should probably have one because I tried to spend all my money in Powhatan. I don't like to go in other places. So if the money in Powhatan will help with the meals tax, I think if people were there, would rather go there than raise their taxes and stuff like that. Right now, everybody's feeling the pinch with the taxes. But I don't know. You can also learn, like I said, from Goochlin, if they got all these big companies and their tax incentives help bring them in. And I think we ought to build bigger homes and more richer homes. Maybe we'll pay more taxes that way. But I'm proud of this county. I hate to see it go to pot just because people don't want to pay the taxes. And I'm willing to pay taxes as long as it goes to the police department and those places. Because we deserve a good police department. I went to Walmart to go shopping, and they closed it at 5 o'clock just because they said these protesters were coming in. Well, they're not real protesters. These people are out to do harm. They say they targeted the Walmart. If our businesses in Powhatan can't feel safe about opening, we can't allow that. So we need a strong police department. So I'd say let's fund them, police departments. And everybody else, they can make this county much stronger. Maybe we'll set an example for the state.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Jim Carver, 4245 Steger Creek Drive.
Welcome.
Thank you. I want to thank you, the entire board, very much for all the hard work, you know, and to include the staff, and also the constitutional officers. I know a lot of dialogue goes on with the constitutional officers. And that's not, I'm not being insincere. I'm very, I know I've been through a lot of budget processes over the years too, and I witnessed a lot of hard work. I echo what Jamie said. A lot of passion in all the presentations tonight, and that's very appreciative, you know, very, very awesome to see. So regardless of the outcome, our varying opinions we all have, I want you to know that I'm very appreciative that I live in a community that allows its citizens to so freely interact, so closely with the board, staff members, constitutional officers. You know, that doesn't, that doesn't happen everywhere, and we're very fortunate. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carver.
Pete Page, 2936 Edith Lane.
Welcome.
I want to talk about the Skaggs Road building that we're funding $552,000 with a building that's valued at $450,000 to save $30,000 to $35,000 in rent. That is half of it's a fairly new building, and half of it used to be called the Cannery. And I think when you start taking that building apart, you will find a whole lot more money needs to be spent. And I just don't think that's a very good investment of our money. And my next topic is on our tax assessment. Especially, we have a lot of properties that are not being taxed correctly. It appears to me there's half a million dollars that's not being taxed. We have a lot of other properties that there's no acreage on them. Some of them are only half acres. Some of them are smaller acres. But some of them have more acres. That's not being, it's a bunch of those are on being taxed. I think we need to really look at this assessments because we're missing a whole lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Joanna Fico, 2762 Maiden's Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's been a while since I came up here. I've been watching you online and whatnot. Real simple, people seem to think that they're pretty much done, is it's been a pretty contentious meeting, and it kind of gives me faith in the system a little bit because that means that all of you were very fervent about what your beliefs are. You care about what you're doing, and it's been very obvious, no matter who agrees with you or not, that you put a lot of time and effort into it. I mean, a lot of time and effort. And I just wanted to say that I think most of Powhatan really appreciates that. And I want to thank you for all the effort you put into it. You're never going to please everybody. That's just the way it is. And, but it is appreciated, how much time and effort. And sometimes it's just important to take a minute and just say thank you. So I'm saying thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Andrew Snee, I live at 3710 Maiden's Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. I hate to echo, I don't want to sound like I'm just echoing, but that was such a great comment by the last speaker. In these times of uncertainty, we need leadership that is visionary, courageous, and thoughtful. And I want to applaud each of you for your effort, for your time, your commitment, and your dedication to the residents of Powhatan. So I want to thank you. And I want to thank you for listening to all of the residents. And again, they were tough decisions, but again, I voted for people to, for my supervisor to lead. So therefore, using all the information that I might not have had, to use that information to make decisions. And I certainly applaud each of you all, and thank you very much.
it. I really liked all the proposals, but I like my guy pretty well, too. I'm in the insurance business, and I just want to say that, you know, early on, we thought we were going to lose a lot of business customers. I have to say, the farther we get out in the counties, the less that's been true. And I lost a few restaurants in downtown where there's a high density of restaurants. It's not the case out here. I can show you restaurants that are doing better now than takeout, than we're doing with sit-down. They're pretty happy about the results. I can show you contractors who were scared to death three months ago that are doing better than they've ever done. I can take you to Lowe's and Home Depot, and they're like, it's Christmas every day. So I think the worries about the economy are unfounded. I can tell you, the real estate is being bid up. I have a lot of Realtor friends, and if something kind of decent goes on the market, it's gone. They bid it up by the days end, the flippers are flipping. There's so much good going on, I think that we may listen to the news too much, Mr. Cox. I think the low rate would have been more in line with what people in Powhatan would like to see. And so I appreciate y'all's work. 82 was good. I think we need to be working in the direction of some of the counties around us because our rating is high. If you look around the state, I've read studies that say we're like in the top 10 in the highest in the state. We're not Fairfax, you know, Suffolk, or, you know, whatever. And so, you know, let's work that way, because I think that a lot of folks here have been, you know, looking for that to happen for some time. And we elected the folks we did because we kind of promised to go that way, you know. So thanks for what you do, and I support the lower tax rates. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to come forward and address the board? Brett, do we have anybody online?
We do. We have currently two raising their hand to speak. First is Mary.
Welcome. Welcome.
Looks like, looks like you are muted.
Let's try the next person, and we can come back.
Okay, Mary, we'll come back to you. Looks like you were muted. Next is Curtis.
Welcome.
Hello. Good evening. Can you hear me? Yes, I just wanted to thank Mr. Norvig for presenting an 80 cent option, which I wish could have been approved. And just to say that I'm disappointed we couldn't go below the 85 cents that y'all approved. And I don't know, I saw that a couple of school things that nobody can get clear on those in one meeting, in a couple hour meeting. So I'll just have to go with what we've got. Thank you for your efforts.
Could you please give us your full name and address?
Yes, Curtis Newton, 2000 Jews Ferry Road.
Thank you, sir.
I do not see, we do still have, Mary participating, her hand's no longer raised. May not have been able to connect. There's no one else?
So we don't have anybody else put in the queue?
Nobody else raising their hand, they're on the phone.
Okay. Not seeing anybody wishing to come forward. We'll close this second public comment period. County attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
County administrator comments?
Yeah, just a couple. One, excited to welcome Ned Smither, so congratulations on making that hire. A few of his colleagues have reached out to me, so just to let you know, he's very well-respected and comes with great recommendations from around the region. And I think being finance director in Henrico, you know, no question about his technical skills, but what everybody was sharing with me was just such a, what a great person he is. So I think that's important for Powhatan and, you know, what we're all about. So look forward to working with you. Also, just want to emphasize, some of our speakers and board members have emphasized this, but, you know, for the citizens and public at large, if all you're seeing of this is the budget meetings, there are an hour here, two hours there, 30 minutes there, it doesn't show how much time this board and staff have put in. So, you know, this started, I think, very early on. You all recognize this was not going to be a regular budget year. And we've been working since, you know, countless scenarios, and you all have respectfully, you know, pushed each other and have healthy debate, and probably hundreds, if not thousands of hours collectively between us and staff and the citizens going over this. So again, that's not evident if all you're doing is watching the meetings. Also, we thank our constitutional officers and our department heads who also weighed in on the budget, you know, really helpful, and appreciate that they always reach out and share their input also, in giving us the data to have the best information on potential collection rates and what we're looking at. And then lastly, just the citizens, you know, how many times has former supervisor Tucker talked about budget adoption? You know, we have one or two people in the audience or speakers this year. I can't remember another year we've had so much participation and feedback from people. So hopefully that continues. Certainly great to see. So that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sharnon. Mr. Norvig?
Mr. Byerly? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To echo Brett's comments to the staff, thank you very much. I know I called quite a few times. And constitutional officers, yeah, I called. And Brett, thank you. You responded to me at 10 o'clock Friday night. So I, that's the thing that makes this county special. We can hear people talk about, we lose people. We have a great county. We have a great school system. We have a great county staff. We have a wonderful situation. Everybody has a bump in the road. We'll get through it. It's not going to be an issue. I do want to read something really quick that came out of the Powhatan today, and Lauren is here, on May the 13th, 2020, under government briefs. Give you a little insight, at least from where I come from, having been here a long time. Some of you out here have too. "The history of the county's recovery from the Great Recession and other economic indicators suggests that the county may not be as financially affected as many other localities, and hopefully may recover more quickly." That's the Powhatan that I know. We're not bulletproof, not saying that, but we're a pretty resilient county. And then the last thing, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cox was mentioning our vision. I think we talked about, I don't think we voted on it, but I'm pretty sure we'll all pass it. We had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Ken Peterson from Goochlin, who made a comment that stuck with me the other night in our meeting. Mr. Peterson, who's a supervisor over there, has his own company and consulted with us on our mission and vision statement, made the comment that nobody said anything about, but I heard it loud and clear. Part of Goochlin's success is their competitive tax rate. They have to have a competitive tax rate. You've got to be competitive. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Byerly. Mr. Cox? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before, I've got some remarks, but before I start those, Brett, you and Charla worked all weekend long. Okay, you really did. Okay. Thank you. And then you, you worked all day today, okay, to do it all over again. So we recognize that, and we appreciate it. "In my corporate life in the property and casualty business on the underwriting side, I routinely wrote checks for things people swore could never happen and would not happen. With that real-life scar tissue, I began to assess COVID-19. From the day became apparent that COVID-19 was going to play havoc with our economy, I've said the following. Take small steps, conserve financial resources, accumulate as much liquidity as possible, and have a Plan B. And that is what we worked for and what the budget we passed accomplished." Finally, I'd like to take a moment and talk about schools, 58% of the budget. You hear, if you're around long, you hear on one hand, the education world has been short-funded in the past, send more money. On the other hand, you hear our school system is bloated, too much overhead, just cut the dollars. I do not expect these views to change. But they set these aside for a moment and look at what the schools are trying to do, which is educate our children and where we're at. Where we're at is really where I want to go. This is the governor's plan, such that it may be, of getting us back to school. And in it, he has kind of a chilling statement. "The extended period of school closures in Virginia has exacerbated previously existing differences in student experiences, levels of support, and access to resources. The NWEA, that's the Northwestern Evaluation Association, a nonprofit organization that develops and offers students' assessments, estimates that students may return to school in the fall, in person or virtually, with roughly 70% of the learning gains in reading relative to a typical school year. And in mathematics, students are likely to show much smaller learning gains, returning with less than 50% of the learning gains, and in some grades, nearly a year behind with what we would observe in normal conditions." Quite frankly, there've been few times when our children needed our financial support more than they need it now because they can ill afford to lose another year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Cox. Mrs. Carmack?
Thank you. I would like to just first thank staff, because the, you know, hundreds of, not hundreds, but dozens of iterations that we went through. And secondly, I would like to just comment to Mr. Norvig and Mr. Byerly, I too agree with you both. I mean, I do think our tax rate is a little high. It is high. And that is one thing I would like to, over the tenure of my, my next four years, I would like to work to get it down. I just feel that we need to do that in a slow, responsible manner. And this next six months is not the time to take a huge, you know, knife to the tax rate. So I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmack, and I agree with you. I would also like to thank staff. And I'd like to take you back to when we made the decision that we were going to hire a new county administrator, and we were going to use staff to get us through that period to make a budget. We had confidence in Charla. And we had confidence that Brett, our assistant county administrator, could guide us during that period of time. And as one of the speakers who said earlier, you know, everything was going great. I mean, we were in Disneyland back in January. So we truly expected to be able to hire a county administrator, you know, within three months. That's, you know, maybe four at that side. So here we are tonight with a new county administrator, and Brett was relieved to see that Ned was still sitting in the office after we, in the audience, after we had a discussion. He didn't leave. So that's a good sign, Brett. Anyway, can you imagine being thrust in the front lines during an event the world has never seen? And I told Brett, you know, you'll be able to tell your kids, you were the interim county administrator in charge with putting together a budget and running a county during the absolute worst of times. And you can tell them you were there, and you brought us home. Same goes for you, Charla, and all the staff. So none of this has been easy ever since we had that emergency meeting on March 15th. Every day has felt like a week, every week has felt like a month, every month has felt like a year. And we're still not through it. But we have been able to, I believe, provide essential services for this county, continue forward with a form of education that none of us ever anticipated having to do in this county. And most of all, we were able to hire and recruit a new county administrator, which we are looking forward to working with and leading Kent Powhatan County to the next level. So sometimes, you know, we get lost in everything going on around us in the news. But echoing the comments of other supervisors, you do have a good county. And you've got a good board who cares very much about this county and its future. And we're going to move forward. We always do. Thank you. So with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. What time is it, Mrs. Carmack?
9:22.
9:22.